All right, we're going to get started right off with district updates from Dr. Kostorik.
All right, good evening. It's great to see everybody. Great to walk through the art show here at Quest. I know our art staff and our students have been working so hard, and we have all variety of displays over the next several weeks. Many of them have started. We're also in concert season, so we have quite a few concerts. The kids have been working so hard, so I always encourage you, as I see all of you at all those events, it's just a great opportunity to celebrate the great work happening here at Hilton. I wanted to take the time to wish a belated Happy Principals' Day to our fantastic Fab Five: Dr. Rudd, Mrs. Prakowsky, Mr. Warren, Dr. Munecko, and Dr. Green. Thanking them for their leadership and the heart that they bring to our schools every day. They really do a fine job, and I'm always impressed with the work that they're doing. A huge shout out to Hilton sophomore, Charisma Scott. She was honored by Monroe County Young Citizen of the Year by County Executive Adam Bellup. So that's a very impressive and incredible achievement, so congratulations. Also this past week, we added to our team of Golden Apple Award winners. Third grade teacher Alyssa Casper received a Golden Apple Award from Channel Eight, so congratulations to her. On the tennis courts, Jackson Esposito and Sean Fisher doubles, and Damian Mash in singles had an outstanding performance in sectionals, so congratulate them on their sectional championship. They are advancing to the state qualifiers. And even better, the team brought home the Monroe County Two Championship the week before. Congratulations to them. And last but not least, last week was a week all about gratitude as we celebrate Staff Appreciation Week. Within that staff appreciation, we differentiated on Tuesday Teacher Appreciation Week, and then we also are just wrapping up Nurses Appreciation Week here in the district. So we thank every team member here in the district that makes it such a special place to grow and learn. That's everything I have for you, so I don't answer any questions you might have.
All right, next up, Ms. Pallini.
A couple of updates out of the office of construction. Today, the New York State Education Department, in collaboration with Eric Bozzi's, officially released a series of eight university briefs, both part of the statewide university initiative. The briefs were developed on the guidance of Dr. Deborah Lowenwood Wall. They're grounded in research as well as best practice, and their purpose is to support evidence-based math instruction pre-K through 12, trying to give educators practical, scientifically-informed strategies to enhance our university outcomes. I attended that conference today at Bozzi's Two for the statewide hybrid webinar, and that gave educators the opportunity to engage with the content, see the literacy briefs for the first time, instead of digging into possible implementation around those briefs. And we'll be spending this autumn and summer learning more about those and how they'll impact our education pre-K through 12 moving forward. And then this Friday, Quest Elementary will proudly host its Primary Years Program exhibition. This is the culminated project for our grads, or sixth-grade students, in the ID Primary Years Program. The event showcases, I'm having a hard time speaking today, months of them engaging in inquiry-based learning. They explore independently or in small groups areas that they are passionate about, real-world issues from environmental sustainability to community well-being and everything in between. Through this research, collaboration, and presentation, they demonstrate a lot of our learner attributes that are associated with the ID learner profile. Family, staff, and community members are invited to attend and celebrate on Friday. It's a powerful reflection of Quest's commitment to developing our lifelong learners and making sure students have passion they can pursue. Have you got any questions to my help? Thanks.
All right, Mr. Dale.
Yeah, just wanted to give you an update from a few weeks ago when I talked a little bit about the Rochester area, HR people working to schedule their own Teacher Recruitment Day. One of the obstacles that we wanted to clear before we did this was to seek input from the higher end, from Corlin to Buffalo to the Rochester area schools. We hosted a call with them just last week, and they were incredibly supportive. We asked a lot of questions like, why did the Rochester Teacher Recruitment Day go away? What was happening there? We need to get some insights. The Rochester area schools, which unfortunately, when you want to ask a few questions, you get chosen to lead a few things, and I'll be leading this for the next year for the county. But I'm pleased to report that all of Bozzi's One, all of Bozzi's Two component districts have agreed to participate. We will host this day on March 20th, 2026. That's really good news if you think about our student teachers at that time. They also won't be attending school that day, although they sometimes come to Superintendent's Conference Day. I'm quite comfortable that they'll choose to come to an opportunity where they can meet with every single district as part of our job fair and again Teacher Recruitment Day. So again, I look forward. We have great people assigned in four different committees for this. It will be at Gates Childy, as I said, I couldn't tell you where it was before. But it'll be at Gates, and it's really nice in the fact that, again, you know where it's located. That 493-90 piece will be accessible to our schools as far as Wayne Fink or the Bozzi's, to Genesee Valley Bozzi's districts. Again, if you remember Teacher Recruitment Day in the past, it did take schools from as far as Alaska to Texas. We won't be hosting any of those schools. This will be a Rochester fair only for the participating schools. Next, I wanted to talk to you about some of our staffing updates. Interview committees are definitely in full swing. I had the pleasure of serving on the committee last week with 11 candidates for elementary. The principals have done a great job this year of coordinating all of their committees. Program coordinators, teachers that are serving on the committee, again, just doing a really, really great job. I think the rewarding part was today at about 4 o'clock, I met with one of my former students, just to ensure I was feeling very old today, and we were able to sign. Isabel Ritz is one of the individuals coming in tonight on the addendum. She is very excited. She's got a couple of years of experience from a charter school. She currently has 34 students in her third-grade classroom right now, and she'll be thrilled. She was thrilled today to be able to learn a lot more about Hilton. So again, very pleased with the direction we're going. One of the last pieces that I thought I would share with you is that Dr. Green and I also did a call last week with Nazareth College or University. And one of the pieces that we found is business teachers, as you know, has been a hot topic, very difficult to find certified business teachers. Nazareth still has their program, although it's a bit defunct, meaning they have it on the books, it's just not up and operating. New York State Regents changed the requirements for dual certification. You no longer need 30 credits in both classes for both certifications. You now only need 18 credits. Nazareth and MCC have identified six courses for teachers so that they can get that secondary certification. Nazareth is doing it at their cost, and MCC is going to put out 30 more opportunities for teachers to get secondary certifications identifying six courses among all of their programs. So this could be a real opportunity for us, and paying at such a low cost, and MCC confirmed it was about $566 per three-credit class. So it would be affordable. So pleased we've taken those steps. One of our candidates is currently following up on that and is working with the certification officer. So we'll continue to get creative with new teachers, current teachers, to get those additional certifications so that our students are getting the best.
Hey, Mr. Bix.
So you're going to hear about a 24-minute presentation from me later in the agenda here, so I'll keep it pretty brief. But one thing regarding budget that I did want to share is we did receive with the New York State settled budget some additional state aid that did come into the district. It did cover our estimated amount. I don't love to be able to gamble and say we're going to get something, and this time it actually came through, although it didn't necessarily come where we expected it to come from. We thought it was going to be on the foundation aid side. We thought that it was going to be adjusted as part of the due minimum. That did not come into fruition, so the due minimum stayed at that 2%. But where we did see an increase was the change to the Bozzi's aidable level. So that's been at $30,000 for, I can't tell you how long. They are now proposing indexing that by $10,000 a year over the next three years. So that's where a big bulk of our increase came in on that. But I am happy to say what we budgeted for in state aid, we are going to be receiving enough to cover that, so we're not going to have to make any other adjustments, although we are still being very thoughtful. And I do appreciate the conversations that our executive team has around budget and open positions and summer programming and various other components of our budget. The last thing I just want to update you on is the multitude of capital projects that we have going on right now. So we have received proposals for a $100,000 project, which is going to be replacing some flooring over in the kindergarten wing at Northwood. We're anticipating that this is going to be something that we're going to be putting forward for the next two years. One has already been approved. It's also in this upcoming budget to finish that wing over at Northwood. So we put out three, reached out to three people that are all on state contract. Two of them have provided proposals. The good news is they were within like less than $1,000 of each other. So we got really good competitive pricing on this. We're going through the vetting process now, but hopefully at the next meeting, we'll have a recommendation for that and a contract for the Board of Education to act on. We also have a project where we started the kickoff meeting for, which is the irrigation project over at the varsity baseball field. We also had a kickoff meeting for the high school restroom renovation project. And we are continuing the work related to the sound system upgrade at the high school auditorium. We just had a meeting today where we talked about the dimension of the actual sound booth room. If you notice, when you ever go to one of our events, they actually have that out and they remove some seats. We're talking about getting that back in and extending that area so that it can be secured behind, like it was originally designed for, but they don't have enough space, so this will allow them for that space. And then really the largest project, our $37.2 million project. Phase one is nearly complete. The acoustical upgrades at Northwood are complete. The fire system change-out of our transportation is complete. They're working their way through the high school now. Once they're done with the high school, which they should be doing a cutover later this summer, they'll be transitioning over to Merton Williams, which will run through early 2026. And that will finish up our phase one work. Phase two work has, two A work has been bid out. Contracts have been awarded. That work is going to be starting in the next couple of months. They're already mobilizing and submitting bonds and insurance and all the things that they have to do on the front end of that project. I know Mr. Warren's out in the audience. I felt like I spent a lot of time with him over the past couple of weeks just going through some of the final touches as far as color coordinating and different finishes for the library and the classrooms for the renovations going to be starting here at Quest. So we're really excited about that work taking place. And then Phase 2B has gone out to the state. We originally were going to go through with what's called an expedited review, which you have to pay for. However, right now, the state is actually in a really good spot, so we made the decision that we're just going through the regular review process. It still should put us on a good timeframe for going out to bid for that work. It'll also save us about $35,000 because we won't have to go through that process. But we anticipate being able to go out to bid sometime between August and October is what we're shooting for on that. So that would be on our ideal timeframe. Obviously, if the state slows down and we don't get that, we'll have to adjust and react to that. Every month, you do get a copy of the updated report. It really does focus on the $37 million capital project. It goes through all of the finances of the project, all the contracts that have been awarded, any change orders, all that's out there. You can see all of that. It also gives a project schedule, and then we're providing both written and picture descriptions on the work that's being done as a means to keep the board updated around the project. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, moving on to our presentation, the 2025-2026 Annual Budget Vote and Election Hearing.
Hello, thank you for taking the time to learn about the Hilton Central School District's 2025-26 proposed budget. My name is Adam Geis, and I am Assistant Superintendent for Business. I'd like to thank everyone who provided the input that went into the development of this budget. We have 13 budget committees comprised of Board of Education members, administrators, teachers, school-related personnel, students, and community members. This past January, we also held an in-person community budget forum. There were also eight different budget presentations between November 2024 and April 2025 during regularly scheduled Board of Education meetings. During the budget development process, we anchored into our cadet intentional values of integrity, welcoming and affirming, people-first, and lifelong learning. You can find all the budget presentations, including this one, on the district's website. In this presentation, we will go over the district accomplishments and various data benchmarks. We'll look at different budget factors that impacted the development of this budget. We will review both the expenditure and revenue budgets and go over the bus purchase propositions. This year, there will be two bus purchase propositions, one for our traditional diesel gasoline buses and a separate proposition for the purchase of one electric bus. There are three individuals running for three seats on the Board of Education. And finally, we will go over the voting guidelines for the vote on May 20th, 2025. Let's start by looking at some of the district accomplishments and data benchmarks from this past year. The Art Department at Merton Williams Middle School held the eighth annual five-by-five charity art show. There were over 300 works of art that were on display by some extremely creative students at Merton Williams. There were three Golden Apple Award winners this year, as Christina Best, music teacher at Hilton High School, Alyssa Casper, third-grade teacher at Village Elementary School, and Kennedy Shirtlet, class primary teacher, were all recognized by Channel Eight News. This year, 34 students earned valedictorian honors, 59 students earned Lumoco CTE endorsements, and eight students are candidates for an international baccarat diploma. Our music department continues to offer great experiences to the students and community. The 21st Annual Evening Jazz was a huge success. We had so many wonderful music and drama productions throughout the district that featured so many talented students. Reach students from Northwood and Quest Elementary made the trek out to the Buffalo Science Museum to participate in the Western New York Invention Convention. This event encourages K-8 students to engage in STEM learning through invention and entrepreneurship and provide students with the opportunity to create and present their own inventions. Overall, there were 11 top-three finishers with both livid standing and a stellar driver advancing to the national competition. There were so many great accomplishments by our students who participated in various competitions, projects, and charitable events. For example, 18 students participated in the Skills USA New York Leadership Conference and Competition in Syracuse. 21 students were candidates for the New York State Seal of Vital literacy. Our MP Holes event raised money for the GADAP cupboard and Hyphert International. And lastly, our high school Sources of Strength students and staff presented at the New York State School Board's Annual Conference in New York City. There were also many individual and team accomplishments in athletics. Alexis Garrick was a Section V girls' champion in pole vault. Annalee Green was a Section V girls' champion in the triple jump. Thomas Cabella was a Section V boys' champion in the high jump. And John Contrera, Nolan Tidings, Jack Martin, and Promise Cabella were the Section V boys' champion in the 4x400-meter relay. We had another strong year for both our wrestling team and our cheerleading team. There were two individual sectional wrestling champions, Lucas Jaeger and John Testa. Our cheerleaders were Section V winter Division One large-team champions, and they placed fifth in New York State. Kayden Vanchovski was a Section V girls' champion in the 200-meter individual medley for swimming. We look at several benchmarks related to how our students are performing academically as well as how we compare financially to other districts in the county. One of the benchmarks we look at is students earning a Regents diploma. Hilton students performed very strong in this area with 99.7% earning a Regents diploma, and the tenure history shows that we were consistently in the high 90s. We also look at those students who earn a Regents diploma with a dance designation. We are down slightly from the pre-COVID years, but still very consistent with the most recent year at 48.9%. So what do Hilton students do once they earn that Regents diploma? 75% of Hilton students either attend a two- or four-year college when they graduate. You can see the breakdown showing 60% of students attending a four-year school and 15% attending a two-year school. We know going to college is not the only path our students take. 21% of our students will enter the workforce, 2% will be headed to a trade or technical school, and 2% will join the military. One of the financial benchmarks we use is the cost per pupil. Cost per pupil is simply the total budget divided by enrollment. For the 16th year in a row, we have the lowest in the county at $25,052, and well below the county average of $28,818. There are a couple of significant reasons for this. The first is that Hilton's enrollment is not decreased at the same pace as the enrollment at many other districts. The second is related to our budget practices and other efficiencies. We do not generate large amounts of fund balance with our budget. We will talk more about fund balance and reserves later in the presentation. Our efficiencies include the size of the district, including the number of schools and how those schools are staffed. Other districts in the county may have more schools and thus more staffing needs. Another financial benchmark that we use is taxes paid. We claim that the sixth of the 17 districts in the county. If you owned a $200,000 home with a basic star extension, you would pay approximately $2,832, which is below the county average of $3,239. That same home in the Russian Henrietta School District, which is the lowest in the county, would be approximately $2,436. Why the difference? Well, Hilton's tax base is primarily residential in nature, but it is growing with new housing tracks, especially in the north-east portion of the district, while Russian Henrietta is much more commercial in nature with marketplace mall and several car dealerships. That same home in the highest taxed district would pay $4,804 in school taxes. I'm not going to tell you what district that is, but they two are primarily residential in nature. However, they are fully developed and do not have new housing developments. Let's look at the budget factors that impacted the development of the 2025-26 budget. As I always say, no two budgets are ever the same. The next several slides will highlight some of the budget factors. It seems that each year, we are faced with some new and challenging budget factors, but this year, there were also several positive developments. These are the three main areas that we focus on when we're developing a budget. The proposed tax levy will increase 1.77%, which is within the New York State property tax cap. Our goal is to eliminate the use of fund balance and reserves to balance the budget. However, during difficult budget years, we do use our fund balance and reserves in order to balance the budget. This year, we are proposing using just over $350,000. And finally, the funding initiatives to support the district's strategic plan will be accomplished through reallocation of resources or through grants. We had 20 staff members indicate that they will retire by the end of the school year, 11 teachers, and nine support staff. That is a lot of experience that needs a district that will be hard to replace. Whenever we have a vacancy, we determine if we are going to replace the position, eliminate the position, or change the position. We often see savings when we are replacing a veteran staff member with a new staff member. We'll talk more about this when we get to the adjustments that were made to the expenditure budget. State aid, which is a large funding source for many school districts, was impacted by the late adoption of the state budget and changes to the foundation aid form that proposed by the governor. The changes included replacing 2,000 census poverty data with the most recent census small-area income and poverty estimates data, replacing the usage of free and reduced-price lunch data with economically disadvantaged data, and ensuring that districts received at least a 2% year-to-year increase. All of these are seen as positive changes to the state aid formula. The Senate and Assembly agreed with the governor's proposed budget with some slight modifications, mainly increasing the due minimum from 2% to 3%. At the time this presentation was created, the state did not have a settled budget. Overall, our state aid is moving up just over $2.1 million, which includes approximately $240,000 in anticipated additional aid once the state budget is adopted. Health insurance continues to be a major factor in our budget development process. We are part of the Monroe County Consortium and have experienced much lower increases in the community-rated plan over the last several years. Even with the lower rates, this year, the increase will be 14.4%. The Hyde Medical Health Plan offers a win-win scenario with savings to the employee and to the employer. We have 271 active and retired employees in the Hyde Medical Health Plan, up from 230 the prior year. Since 2012, districts had to comply with the property tax cap, which limits the increase in a district's tax levy. The starting point is either 2% for the rate of inflation, whichever is lower, plus or minus certain defined adjustments. The next slide will show a graphic representation of Hilton's property tax gap. Every district in New York State must calculate their tax gap each year and submit it to the comptroller by March 1st. Districts that stay within their property tax gap only need a simple majority to pass the budget. Those that choose to go above the tax cap and seek an override would need to have a supermajority, or 60%, to pass the budget. This chart shows the components of the tax gap and compares it to the tax gap from the prior year. You can see that the tax gap can have significant changes from year to year. The rate of inflation changed from 4.12% in 2024-25 to 2.95% in 2025-26. The new construction decreased from 0.85% to 0.46% this year, and the capital tax levy lowered the tax gap by 0.69%. For 25-26, the maximum amount we can increase our levy by and still require a simple majority is 1.77%. The proposed budget is at our 1.77% property tax cap this year, so we only need a simple majority to pass the budget. I wanted to provide a quick update on the $37.2 million capital project that was approved by voters on March 7th, 2023. Phase one work includes replacing the fire alarm system at Transportation, Merton Williams, and the high school, which is underway and will be complete by the winter of 2025. Also in Phase One is cafeteria acoustic improvements at Northwood Elementary School. This work is complete. The Phase 2A work includes Quest Elementary classroom renovations, high school main entrance walkway replacement, and network upgrades district-wide for construction to begin this summer. Phase 2B work includes kitchen and classroom innovations at Village Elementary and air conditioning and technology room renovations at Merton Williams Middle School. Phase 2B plans have been submitted to New York State, and we anticipate construction beginning in the spring of 2026. The next several slides will discuss the development of the proposed 25-26 budget. We took several measures to balance the budget. We changed or reduced, and in some cases eliminated, various Bozzi's services, including video coaching and reading recovery. Earlier in the presentation, I mentioned our velocity in filling vacancies. We were able to eliminate nine positions through attrition, including two bus drivers, one cleaner, and six teaching positions. Many of our employees have made the switch from the higher-cost health plans to the Hyde Medical Health Plan, or opted out of insurance coverage altogether. Each budget committee was tasked with reducing their per-pupil allotment by 5%. And we eliminated our student furniture initiative and the remodel and repair budget in the Buildings and Grounds Department, which includes things like painting, door replacements, and various parking lot improvements. All of these changes reduced the proposed budget without the need for layoffs or significant impacts on students. The proposed budget is $105,227,894, which is up $3,718,359, or 3.66% from the prior year. The biggest changes are listed under the benefits contractual line. They increased over $2.2 million. The benefit statutory line saw an increase in the employee retirement system that was offset by reductions to both the New York State teacher retirement system and what we pay for workers' compensation insurance. Instruction increased by $1.6 million, which is expected to support everything that is offered to our students. Central services decreased by just over $400,000, mainly due to the elimination of the remodel and repair budget discussed earlier. By law, we are required to show the budget in three parts: the administrative, capital, and program. These charts show the percentage of the total budget that falls into each of the three categories and compares it to the prior year. As we develop the budget, especially when we look at new initiatives, whether through reallocation of resources or through grants, we anchored into our district goals and cadet intentional values seen here. We are excited to announce the reallocation of our resources to access a math coaching service through Bozzi's. This initiative will provide our elementary math intervention artists with in-depth training on math progressions along with job-invited coaching opportunities to enhance their instructional practices. We believe this will significantly benefit our students' mathematical understanding and growth and hope to move this model through the teachers at our elementary level over the next few years. We are pleased to announce the reallocation of staffing to create a K-6 instructional support teacher position. This role will assist teachers with implementing tier-one instructional programs, support our shifts in reading instruction, and provide timely job-invited coaching opportunities for our elementary teachers in all content areas. After a year of studying the community-school strategy and conducting a needs assessment at Village Elementary, we are excited to implement a community-schools model. This new approach will provide additional support to students and their families by bridging the gap between school and community resources, ensuring a whole-child approach to education and well-being. There were also several adjustments to the revenue budget. We increased our sales tax and Bozzi's refund to reflect a more conservative estimate of what we are receiving. This increased our revenue budget by $300,000, $150,000 respectable. State aid increased by $2.1 million, primarily from foundation aid, Bozzi's aid, and transportation aid. Lastly, we dipped into our savings specifically for retirement reserve using approximately $352,000 to offset increases in the employee's retirement system rate increase. You can see that our budget is balanced as our revenue and expenditure budget are equal. The total revenue budget is the same, $105,227,894, up the same $3,718,359, or 3.66% from the prior year. We discussed previously the $300,000 increase in two sales tax, $150,000 increase to Bozzi's refund, the $2.1 million increase in state aid, and the $773,000 increase to the property tax levy, staying within the property tax. increase to the property tax levy, staying within the property tax cap, as well as the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in the transfer from the retirement reserve. We changed the chart showing the history of appropriate fund balance and reserves by separating the reserve transfers into two categories: debt service reserves and general fund reserves. The red bars represent our debt service reserves and have remained at the same level since two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine. Blue bars represent our general fund reserves. These reserves have fluctuated over the years, and you can see that we are using funds for the first time since the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two year. The red bars represent the use of our appropriate fund balance, and that remains at zero for this budget. Each year, I reach out to the town assessor, who provides preliminary information on assessments and equalization rates. The information provided in this presentation was as of the Board of Education's approval of the superintendent's budget on April eighth. Property tax information won't be finalized until July and won't be approved by the Board of Education until August. The next several slides are projected, but could and most likely will change slightly. This slide shows the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five actual assessments, actual equalization rates, and actual true value assessments by town. It also shows the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six projected assessments, projected equalization rates, and projected true value assessments. The twenty-five, twenty-six true value assessments are calculated by taking the projected assessments divided by the equalization rate. As you can see, the twenty-five, twenty-six projected true value assessments for all properties located in Hilton Central School District total almost three point three billion dollars, compared to just over three billion dollars the year before. Another important thing to note is the change in equalization rates. Clarkson changed from ninety-six to eighty-four percent. Reese changed from sixty-eight to sixty-one percent. Hamlin remained at a hundred percent, and Parma changed from one hundred percent to ninety-eight percent. Generally, if the equalization rate decreases, the tax rate will increase. We will discuss this further in a couple of slides. The largest increase from a dollar perspective is in the town of Reese, which increased by one hundred and eighty-four point five million. Both Reese and Clarkson saw double-digit percentage increases. This was primarily due to the significant decrease in their equalization rates. Here are the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six projected tax rates by town rounded to the nearest cent. Please note that these tax rates will not be finalized until the town assessors finalize their information in July and the Board of Education approve the tax warrants in August. Both Clarkson and Reese will see an increase in their projected tax rates as they have experienced a significant decrease in their equalization rates. Hamlin will see a decrease in their projected tax rate as their equalization rate remained at a hundred percent. Parma will see a slight decrease in their projected tax rate even though their equalization rate decreased slightly. If all four towns were at one hundred percent equalization rates, the projected tax rate would be thirteen dollars and fifty-one cents. The purpose of the equalization rates is to ensure that a property owner pays the same tax bill for a home that has the same value, no matter what town they live in within their district. To calculate the projected tax bill, you take the assessed value divided by a thousand dollars and multiply it by the projected tax rate. This slide uses a home with a value of a hundred thousand as a disease map. For example, if you owned a home worth a hundred thousand dollars in Hamlin, you would pay a projected tax of one thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars. That is, a hundred thousand dollars assessed value divided by a thousand dollars times the thirteen dollars and fifty-one cent projected tax rate. That same house in Reese, which is worth a hundred thousand, would show a value of sixty-one thousand on the tax bill, and you would pay a projected tax of one thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars. Sixty-one thousand assessed value divided by a thousand dollars times the twenty-two dollars and fourteen cents projected tax rate. A home with the same assessed value last year would pay eighty dollars less in taxes this year. We received feedback that new this year, we are showing the projected tax bill for the average home price in each town. The same calculations that we discussed on the prior slide hold true here. This chart shows the actual tax rate at Hilton since two thousand and fourteen. This year, we have two bus purchase propositions on the ballot, one for diesel gasoline buses and one for an electric bus. We are replacing buses that are nine years old with mileage between ninety and a hundred thousand miles. Our district covers seventy square miles and over forty, forty-seven hundred students are eligible for daily transportation. There are over three hundred and ninety-five bus routes covering fifty schools and programs throughout the county, and each year our buses travel almost one point five hundred miles. For the diesel and gasoline bus purchase proposition, we are looking to replace seven sixty-six passenger diesel buses, two thirty-passenger gasoline buses, and two twenty-four-passenger gasoline wheelchair buses for a total cost of one million, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars. These buses will be financed for five years and operated for almost ten years. The state picks up eighty point four percent of the cost, including interest. For the electric bus purchase proposition, we are looking to add one sixty-six passenger electric bus for a total cost of four hundred and seventy-five thousand. We received a grant from NYSERTA totaling two hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred, and will receive two hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred dollars in state aid. The net cost to taxpayers for the purchase of the electric bus is zero. These buses are financed for eight years and operated for ten years. New York State mandates that we purchase zero-emission electric buses in two thousand and twenty-seven with full implementation by two thousand and thirty-five. This means that we will only be able to purchase zero-emission electric buses in two thousand and twenty-seven beyond, and we cannot use any existing diesel or gasoline buses in two thousand and thirty-five. We will need to start training our drivers and mechanics on operating and repairing electric buses. There will be additional costs for charging stations, infrastructure upgrades, and training. There may even be a need to relocate our transportation facilities in the future. If you have any questions, please contact the transportation department. Also on the ballot is the election of board members. This year, we have three candidates running for three open Board of Education seats: Mark Kilber, Amanda Deirdre, and Nancy Packer. You can learn more about the candidates at the Meet the Candidates Night on May sixth in the Quest Auditorium at six P M. The event will be recorded and posted on our website. The budget vote, including the two bus propositions and the Board of Education election, will be held on May twentieth. The vote takes place at the Parma Town Hall, thirteen hundred, Hilton Parma Corners Road for all residents. Polls will be open from six A M. until nine P M. The Monroe County has new voting machines that will be used for all school district votes this year. Absentee and early vote applications are available from the district clerk and on our website. This presentation and all our budget initiatives are available on our website. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me at three nine two, one thousand, extension seven zero three four. Thank you for taking the time to learn about the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Don't forget to vote on May twentieth.
All right. Anybody got any questions for Adam?
That was impressive. Very good. Narrative, beautiful pictures, really pulled together. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, moving on to approval of the minutes. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes from the April twenty-second meeting.
So moved.
By Christine, second by Nancy. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Board member reports. I have nothing to report.
Nothing to report from me. Since the last board meeting, I did attend the Monroe County District Operation Committee meeting. It focused on capital projects in challenging times. It was, it was really interesting to attend because a lot of the times, by the time the board gets information about a capital project from Adam, it's very detailed as to, you know, the cost and exactly what we're doing. And so this was more of an overview and seeing how the process worked from the start of a concept of a project, all the way to the finish where we see kind of the nitty-gritty of the numbers. And so for me, who doesn't always get to see the concept part, I thought this was really interesting to attend. I also went to the empty goals art show, which was fantastic. This year, they included an activity where community members could purchase a piece and glaze it themselves, and then they would fire it and get it back to the person who purchased it. It was super popular with the little kids especially, and I thought that was a great addition. On the fifth of May, I attended the Hilton District Improvement Team meeting, where we reflected on the priorities that had been worked on over the year and talked about things that were embedded in our process, things that were in process of being embedded in our process, and things that we were working to embed into our process. And all of that was couched in the cadet intentional values. Last Tuesday, on the sixth, I was here to watch Meet the Candidates Night, and all three candidates did a great job answering questions despite running uncontested. On the seventh of May, I went to the Legislative Committee meeting on Zoom. We also were, it was our last meeting, well, our second last meeting of the year, and we were reflecting on all of the advocacy actions that we had taken this year to advocate with our legislators, both, you know, the local level and school level, for the best possible funding for our schools, and the best policies for our schools, and plan for next year's actions as well. And today, I had the wonderful opportunity to attend the Unified Basketball Game over at Hilton High School before this meeting. I'd never been to a Unified game. It was absolutely fabulous. It was really fun to see all of our students, both teams, having such a great time and everybody cheering for everybody else, and it was a really good experience. And that is it.
No report. Also attended empty goals. I thought the selection of goals was great. I replaced my key holder. I think it was almost pictured in the budget presentation. I liked the new venue at the beginning of the high school. It was kind of spread out more. It was very well-run. I sat on the committee for the BOCES two, make all the different scholarship committee, so those selections have been made and to be announced at a later date. I attended the May second Act for Education Community Champions. So each district picks a community person to champion that they've worked well with the district. This year, the district chose Tom Banero of Parma Rep, so it was great to do that. Body committee was on May sixth with a forum, so we were able to bring forward some financial statements. The Legislative Zoom Committee, there will be a regents in-person only on June fourth, Wednesday, June fourth, that all members are invited to. It'll be a nice way to kind of finish up here. Thursday, May eighth, it was a law conference. I will place the PowerPoint, the three talks, up on the website on boarddocs. That was really a great conference with really relevant and up-to-date changes that are going on in the school. On Thursday, May eighth, I attended the Genesee Valley chapter of the New York State Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development. So our BOCES two rep is John Abbott. He's represented Hilton for, we think, thirty-something years at this point. So he was awarded the Sister Edwardine Weaver Service to Education Award. It was great to, BOCES two was there, I was there representing Hilton for his dedicated service, and also to Western Runcourt. Did tend, you'll find, and also the Merton Williams Grand Friends was this morning. Great event, great turnout. I appreciated the, Michelle had arranged for the new voting machine to be there so that our grand friends could check that out. And that's about it.
No report. I will add that the Monroe County School Board's annual meeting is coming up on the twenty-eighth. Look for Nancy's email to register. I will be ready, I will be attending as long as Arcadia Flag Football doesn't make it to the finals. If that happens, the slow will be taking our place.
And everybody's in.
Especially Therese, she's just, you know, the last one. They will send you off with pomp and circumstance. Special dessert. All right, moving on to new business consent. It runs all the way through G. With the addendum. So consent through G with the addendum. But a motion to approve. Stephanie, second by Nancy. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. That brings us to new business. First is a new course proposal. So we're looking for a motion to approve the World Language Essentials course.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All right, so Christine, then Nancy. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Next up, I have the first reading for the District-Wide Safety and Security Plan. The motion to approve the first reading. Nancy and Christine. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. And then we will table that until after we read it. Motion to approve the tabling of the safety plan. Stephanie, second by Addie. Any discussion?
Can I just ask why it's being tabled?
To give us time to read it before we permit.
Yeah, okay.
All in favor? Seven oh. Upcoming events are listed there. Next Tuesday night is the budget vote, so I'm sure if you're interested, we will hang out in the little side room there to wait for the tabulations. If not, one of us gets that too. And then we got lots of concerts, lots of senior events are going to be starting, and we'll reconvene in two weeks at the board meeting after Memorial Day, I believe, right? All right, all in favor of adjourning? A motion to adjourn. Christine, second by Nancy. All in favor? Seven oh. Thank you.